I've got livestream now.
You should be up and going.
Are you recording? Yep.
There we go.
All right.
Livestream now.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're now in open session. So we're gonna do things a little bit out of order to work with some people's schedules here. So I'm gonna kick it over to Jared for Board of Health.
All right, a couple of quick items on Board of Health Agenda. First, item number nineteen, Public Health Nurse Update from Lori. Welcome Lori.
Thank you. So just want to give a quick update regarding COVID. The cases so far for Free Town have been since beginning, one thousand and eighty-three. There are currently twenty-nine active cases here in Free Town. Thirty-six cases during the last two weeks. Free Town's positivity rate is up. We're actually at five point one four percent. And if you look at big cities around us like Far River and New Bedford for the same time period, they were actually lower. Far River was at four point six-four and New Bedford was at four point eight-four. Lakeville, who are obviously where we're with in the school district, they're also high and they're also at five point eight-seven. As far as cases in July, we had eighteen, no hospitalizations, no deaths. In August, we were up to seventy-three, one hospitalization and no deaths. And for the month of September, so far, we're at thirty-five cases for the month. As far as cases and people being vaccinated, it seems about forty percent of the cases are vaccinated, the other percent are not. And as far as the sequencing of the specimens, they don't sequence all of them, but of the ones that they had sequenced for July, ten of those cases, so ten of the eighteenth were the Delta variant. And for the month of August, twenty-five of the seventy-three were also the Delta variant. September, those numbers aren't in yet for sequencing. On a different note, mosquito update in testing. So for this year, there have not been any triple E cases in mosquitoes, animals or humans. But there have been West Nile virus. For the state, there's been one hundred and seventeen mosquitoes that have tested positive. One animal that was an alpaca in Middlesex County, and there have been seven humans. The new, the last case, the seventh one, was just reported today in Bristol County. And it was a woman in her thirties that was exposed in Bristol County. So obviously, this is the time of year where we still need to be very vigilant as far as using mosquito repellent and observing those not being outside during the peak hours of dusk to dawn. And with the new human and mosquito updates, the towns around us, Far River has gone up to moderate risk.
Have they said anything, Lori, about overhead spraying?
They have not mentioned anything with that yet. As far as Free Town, we're still at low risk for both, according to the state. We actually haven't had any positive mosquitoes here in our town. But they have been in Far River, so obviously it's right next door.
Really do appreciate that, Lori. Does anyone have any questions for?
Oh, I think that was a great presentation where we stand. So things, you know, unfortunately seem to not be getting better. We thought we were out of it. Does not seem to be the case. Yeah, that's all I gotta say on that.
Yeah, and I guess one quick thing, Lori, is did they say anything about ages of the people who are infected with COVID? Just because, you know, you had mentioned the fact of Lakeville also seeing higher numbers than some surrounding cities with us. So is it a lot of younger, unvaccinated people who are?
Yeah, there are a lot of people who are vaccinated and it does appear, I didn't do an age this time, and I can run that report. But it does seem like it is younger people. There haven't been, I've had a couple of cases, you know, in their seventies, eighties. But for the most part, they're some of them are kids and then some people in their like thirties, forties and fifties.
I just wasn't sure if it was directly related to schools, and I guess that's why I asked.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, there, I mean, there are some, some school age children that have tested positive. I can get you, I'm not sure when the next meeting is, but I can get your report and send that to you with the ages.
Thank you. I appreciate that a lot. George, you got anything for?
No, I think, do we want her to stick around for our next two agenda items? So?
Yeah.
Special Town Meeting, that we're going to be discussing?
No, no, next is gonna be a little discussion and vote. This is still Jared, though. Discussion and vote on the COVID-nineteen Employees Sick Protocol.
Okay.
So I saw that Lori did send over some documents here related to this. So I guess this is kind of talk about, so our current protocols, I guess, are they in line with the CDC recommendations? I think, I mean, I don't know.
So what I sent over to you is her masked DPH guidance.
DPH, okay. So I'm just reviewing it.
Yeah, I
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, do we think we need to update our employees' sick protocol? Right? Is that kind of the discussion here? I don't know if Luanne or Debbie or anybody has any kind of thoughts on this. I'd like to, I'm very interested to hear them and then kind of bounce these ideas off Lori. Yeah. I kind of need a refresher on exactly the protocol we have right now anyways.
I'm not sure that we had a protocol, and that might be what prompted this, this actual agenda. And I think, you know, so Lori has outlined the protocol based on her CDC, whatever else information she's gathering. So I think we have to defer to her for the protocol.
Yeah, so I mean, I'd like to kind of defer this, I'm obviously not a medical expert here, like I'd like to defer to Lori on her recommendations. I mean, can we get maybe something put together that's just kind of puts, you know, our protocols into words here and something that we can post?
I think she did have something, at least I've seen something. I don't know.
Yeah, this, she said, the email she sent earlier on kind of has the guidance, right? What, and I, I think it's very reasonable. It's just saying like, okay, if you're unvaccinated or you have a weakened immune system whatever, then you should be wearing a mask, you know, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see a problem with.
And then it just shows a seven days of strict quarantine versus a ten days versus the fourteen days. Yeah, this makes sense to me.
So it does something in place in case we do have an employee that comes, you know, not that we wouldn't talk to Lori anyways and get her recommendations, but at least it kind of outlines it for us. So we know.
And all the employees know, right? There's something in place and they all know that this is where they can fall back on.
That makes sense to me. All right, so I guess we'll vote on that?
Yeah. I will entertain a motion and let me just get it open so I don't miss the warning.
Um, Trevor, is there, is there an issue? I think the protocol is great. Can we mandate the protocol for the union employees?
Good question. I didn't consider.
What was that? I'm sorry, I missed.
So Deb's question is, are we allowed to mandate this protocol for the union employees?
So I guess it might be a motion that says something like we would recommend these, this protocol procedure unless the union has something different, maybe just to protect us from overriding anything the unions might have in place.
Yeah.
I just have one.
Yep.
Just, just one thing. As far as the, how to calculate the positive COVID protocol and one person can come back. So those are all mass DPH. So if a case goes to wherever they live, so obviously the cases I get in Free Town, this is the guidance per mass DPH. So for some of those things, like calculating that, it wouldn't be able to be any different whether they were a union or not, as far as that piece.
That's probably okay. Okay.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to put in place the COVID-nineteen Employee Sick Protocol that Lori has sent over.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, my last item. I am agenda item number twenty-one, discussion and vote on backup COVID-nineteen plan for hosting special town meeting in the event COVID-nineteen protocols require modification.
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I know, please go. I'm curious, is this like in case something changes from the state level or is this if somebody gets COVID? Like, you know, or a group of people get COVID from different boards, what do we do?
And it's tough because you can't do it outdoors, right, in the time of year, because there is a lot of mosquitoes temperature-wise. I don't know that, you know, we talked in the past about the last meeting, possibly doing it outdoors, but.
And we, and we can't do it online, right?
Yep. It's not allowed.
So what are, what are our options? That's the question.
You know, this discussion we should have there with Mike present.
Okay. That works for me. I'm sure he's probably looked into this. Sorry, Luanne?
I checked in with the superintendent of schools just to see what was going on with the schools. And he said, at this point, if anything, they would just be asking us to probably mask up. So we may have to tell people like the week before, a few days before town meeting that, you know, because we're utilizing the school facility, we do have to wear masks. So it's whatever his rules are at that point, too, that we would have to follow.
All right, but I, I think it's even bigger picture, right, where you're hitting certain levels or what if they brought the bit, the school age kids, they decide to pull school down again and we have it, you know, so I guess it is something that we should discuss with Mike.
That works.
I'd rather have something, I'd rather have something in place and not have to use it than have nothing in place, so.
I think Mike is coming to the meeting on the fourth of October, which would probably be good and timely because it'll be closer.
Okay.
And so we can add it to that agenda if that works.
Do we have to vote on any of this?
We don't have to vote on that right now.
All right, all, all right. Mike comes in, right?
All right, yeah, let's put it, yeah, we'll get right there. All right, so back to me now?
Yeah, thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Have a good night.
All right, Lori.
So I should have done this right off the bat, but I'd like to welcome Debbie Petty. She's currently our interim town administrator. She's a lifelong Free Town resident. She's also has municipal experience up in Hanson, Mass. She's a accountant and a lawyer. So I think she's gonna add a lot to our team and we're really happy to have her. So Debbie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy to be here. I'm excited.
All right, great. So without that, I'll start going through some of these other agenda items. So first, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one and August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, next, I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrants, one through fourteen.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so agenda items four and five have been moved, pushed to a further meeting in the future. So go on to agenda item six, which is a discussion of vote on approval of declaring items listed by the library director as surplus and scrap listed in Appendix A. So let me get to Appendix A.
I think Jeff might be on to discuss this.
All right, it says Jeff's trying to connect to audio. Oh, looks like.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure if he's having some kind of issue. Jeff, can you hear us?
Okay.
It doesn't appear.
Originally, he was on for the archival next door, so he may have tried to pop off because I told him we weren't doing that.
We're not doing that one?
No, that's the ones we're skipping, number four and five.
Okay.
All right, so it looks like here we have a couple of drawers, cabinets, DVD, paperback rack unit, metal brochure rack. That's at the library. And the schoolhouse, more cabinets, metal shelves. And then we also have some items, sorry, in the town hall basement. Old generator panel. A bunch of file cabinets, two air conditioners. Nothing too exciting, but if Jeff, would Jeff like to speak on it? So I don't want to vote on this until, you know, he has an opportunity to talk to us about it.
No, he did speak with me about it. We went down in the basement and looked at the items as well and said that they were just basically needed to get out of there and go scrap and that the highway department will be coming to get them.
All right, so everyone's on board with this? All right, okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to to approve declaring the items listed in Appendix A as surplus and scrap.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
The catch.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so next we have ambulance abatements. So there is fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents for the abatement, write-off, the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents. So the total is sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. So I will entertain a motion to approve these ambulance abatements and write-offs.
Okay. Before I second that motion, just want to make everyone aware that the billing that the fire department does now was something that was recommended by the finance committee a few years back. And we do collect in round numbers about a half a million dollars a year in net revenue, which is offsetting the cost of the fire department. Almost fifty percent of the cost.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, so people should know that, that fire department isn't costing a million plus. But they are generating the revenue to offset their expenses.
Yeah, like these numbers look big in a vacuum, but once you take, you know, put them in context. Yeah, I hear you.
Having said that, I too.
Or second, yeah, I think I need you to second the motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald? Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we have the co-part class two, or sorry, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles, class two license. So we've kind of went back and forth with co-parts through our attorneys and we've come to an agreement on this. This is the final version. So does anyone have any questions or concerns before we vote on this?
I just want to discuss the obvious here. Co-part is four hundred acres of prime land on the bay that we need to keep in mind. And just want to reiterate that we need to make sure that the testing is done properly and then we get a good baseline.
Yeah.
That I want to make sure that that language is in the contract that we're going to approve.
Yep, I know that we have that in the agreement that we're able to test. Trying to find the exact language here.
I thought it was every sixth month.
Yeah, every six months.
And that the testing be supervised by the town.
Well, we can send our, our own tests, you know, we can test ourselves. So we can send our own company in there to test.
Well, that's even better.
George, that was part of our agreement that we had gone to with them when we went back and forth was because originally they weren't going to let us test and we were able to get them to let us test because I agree with you. Beautiful land on the side of a river.
Have, have anyone been to the facility to see what it looks like now?
No, I can imagine. It's a giant parking lot, right?
It's a gigantic parking lot surrounded by.
Exactly right. I have an aerial picture. I don't know if you'll be able to see it. Can you?
There you go.
Yeah, but that whole area there is, like you said, is parking lot. And any contamination will run off into can't remember the name of exactly the technical. But that's what they'll test is the wells, the retention ponds.
Yeah.
And so we have to make sure that the retention ponds are tested properly. And that we witness how it's done. Our own people are doing it, that's great. But it is a serious issue.
Yeah, I mean, George, I think it might make sense because so since we have the ability to have these tests whenever, you know, every six months, like and I think we should have their first test as soon as possible to set the baseline as you're, as you're referencing.
They, they were supposed to do some testing. There was someone there to do it the day I went. I haven't seen the results. We should be asking for the results. And maybe we should do our own baseline also.
Yeah, okay. Definitely something we should bring up later for sure.
So you want to bring that up later?
I mean, I just don't know exactly, like, you know, we have to kind of figure out what company's going to do the testing, how much, how we're going to pay for it, that kind of stuff. But it's definitely, it's in the agreement for sure. So we have the ability to do it. So it's just getting that, the wheels in motion, you know, it's something maybe Debbie can help us with.
Yeah, then, then our P out there at the time gets set up. That way, when we go off it, if we're already set up with the company to go and do it.
Yeah, I wonder if this is like something, you know, maybe Jeff can actually help us with or, you know, I'm not sure. Somebody of that nature, someone who's familiar with doing this type of testing or at least understanding it.
Yeah. So we're in agreement that we'll do our own baseline then? Is that what you're saying, Trevor?
Yeah, I have no problem that. I think that's a, I think, I think that the future task won't help us if we don't have a baseline, so.
Right. Okay. All right. So that is all I had on that.
All right, so with that, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the license with co-part.
Motion made.
Make the motion that we accept that with the provisions that we've discussed.
All right, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, now to discuss the addition of cameras at the highway department. So this is going to be some security cameras installed the exterior of the building. Looking at each side of the building. And at one interior near the vehicle repair area. I have no problem. This seems to make sense. Do we know, so this the union has been notified, obviously, right?
No, you have to say that it's okay first, and then we have the draft letter in your packet that town council drafted to go to the union steward, Tom Ash.
That makes sense. Okay, all right, so so I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, motion made.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, this is, so next I'll entertain a motion to ratify the town of Free Town Declaration of Emergency, which was originally declared on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one by the Board of Selectmen at an emergency meeting held in the same day.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, now, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the town of Free Town Declaration of Emergency, which was originally declared on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, no longer exists and is formally rescinded at twelve oh one AM on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
Got lost there for a minute.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so moving on, now this is a discussion of vote on the, on the discussion and vote to accept the donation of a flatbed body for a highway department winter sander project from Big Wheels Truck Sales. And I am all about taking this donation. Thank you very much to the Vocats. Seems very nice. I know Chuck is happy about this as well. So this, this donation should save us a considerable amount of money and it's helping take the old fire engine and convert that into a plow slash sander. I think this is awesome. So I'll entertain a motion to accept that donation from Big Wheels.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Next is a discussion and vote to add article to the warrant for special town meeting on transfer from available funds to supplement the budget of the tree warden, the amount of ten thousand dollars. So this is sorry, go. I thought I heard something. Okay, so, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion made, all right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Next is vote to add articles to the warrant for special town meeting to authorize the board of selectmen to appoint parking control officers who shall have the, only those powers and duties conferred or imposed on police officers via, by Master on Law Chapter Ninety, Section Twenty-One A or Twenty-One A and a half or in relation thereto. So I'll entertain that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Next, we have a permit for the fishing tournament for bass boys of fall on Long Pond. And so it's, the event date here is September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, which is in a couple of days. So I have no problem with a bass tournament. Is there anything else I need to know about this, Luanne or Debbie? I'm not sure.
Nope, they're only going to take up like less than half of the parking lot, so twenty-five spots.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the permit for fishing tournament for bass boys on, of bass boys of fall on Long Pond for nine nineteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Now, this is another lot of very popular fishing tournament scene right now. I will, same thing, it's just another fishing tournament called the Jordan Ben Court Bass Fishing Event. It's on October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. Looks to be some same kind of deal. And so I will entertain a motion to approve the permit for the Jordan Ben Court Bass Fishing Event on ten seventeen, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we have
We have to do the roll call.
The group is next level bass fishing, right? So should we call under that and knock the applicant? I don't know.
Yeah.
I thought we called it out under the group.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't think.
I don't know that it matters.
Matter.
Trying to be consistent, I guess.
No, I like it. But um yeah, I think, I think we should be good there. I don't know. Debbie, you know that? I'm not sure, Luanne, anybody?
What was your question?
So like, the, the name, yeah.
Or the individual.
The first one we called out, the, the first one we called out the name, the group, the second one we called out the individual, so I just.
Yeah, no, you're probably right, it should probably be the group.
Alright, yeah, to be safe.
Let's do that.
So I'll entertain a motion to, um, to approve the permit for the next level bass fishing event, Helen Long Pond, uh, on ten seventeen, twenty twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, moving on to the agreement between Cape Cod Aggregates and the Town of Freetown for seven one, twenty twenty-one to six thirty, twenty twenty-two, and told.
This is for the highway, um, road services that you folks had approved previously, so the contract finally came in, so.
Alright, great, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. So this is, um, vote on the approving the revolving fund increase in spending for fourteen, uh, one thousand four hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents to cover police details, the beach and boat ramp, so just, we just went a little above budget for that, is that what's going on here, Luanne?
Well, we didn't, uh, originally anticipate that we were going to need police details at those areas, so it was not in the initial request from the revolving fund, so this is what it has cost thus far for that.
Okay, perfect, alright, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revolving fund increase in spending to cover, uh, fourteen, uh, one thousand four hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents to cover the police details, the beach and boat ramp.
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, so now I am going to take it over to George for personnel board.
Okay. We just take one vote and all, all see here, or we need to each individual.
I think you're going to start with acknowledging the resignations for us, the first two.
Okay.
You don't have to vote for those, so.
We don't have to vote for.
No.
Alright, so we're acknowledging the resignation of Isabel Ferreira uh, from Assistant Treasury Treasurer, effective nine twenty-four, twenty-one. We acknowledge the resignation of Jessica Thomas, Treasurer Tax Collector, effective nine thirty, twenty twenty-one. Acknowledge the retirement of Deborah Souza, effective twelve, twenty, twenty-one. Uh, are we doing, okay.
It's an irrevocable thing.
Um, could, uh, just it's because of the appointment of Blessing Rogers as Board of Registrar, effective ten one, twenty twenty-one through three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, uh, appointment of Deborah Petty, effective nine sixteen twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two to the following committees and groups.
Actually, should we amend that ending date, I didn't, I was just, had six thirty twenty-two on the brain, that's what it usually is, but it should be three sixteen twenty-two? Should we agree?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, uh, the the appointments are for Joint Transportation Planning Group, Local Emergency Planning Committee, CMAS Community Representatives, Serpeth Economic Strategy Committee, Serpeth Representative for Freetown, the Building Committee, Chief Procurement Officer, Community Aggregation Delegate, Economic Development Committee, EMA Public Safety, Ethics Commission Leaders on Health Insurance Advisory Committee, Tax Increment Board.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Uh, yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, Debbie, better be careful, I might make you the measure of what is embarked.
That position is taken, you have one vacancy, I hear.
Okay.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
It was twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we were skipping.
Well, I didn't have to, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, okay. Okay. We, we looked at the, uh, performance review forms?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you need to vote, uh, the forms to use and process for performance review for positions, the Board of Selectmen will conduct. Uh, so if we're okay with those forms, entertain a motion to accept them.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Uh, prove the request from Chief Carlton, I have it to place patrolman Nate Mellow on injured on duty status. Uh, effective nine two twenty-one to nine six twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Discussion and vote on having Jessica Thomas available as a paid consultant as needed to assist with the transition of the new treasurer tax collector. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, so is, is she interested in this?
Yes, she is interested in this, and on your agenda for the twenty-seventh, there's an agreement that's drafted, and she would like to come, she's willing to come for the month of October from one to three o'clock every Friday afternoon, as needed for training.
Okay.
And, and then that will have the outline of pay and everything else.
Well, yeah, but.
They'll need a, a reserve fund transfer, which is on your next agenda as well, to be able to cover that.
That's why I'm seeing that, it's great, because it's just, we can't just pull one out of the hat, so.
And, and then one thing on Friday, like, isn't, doesn't the town hall close at noon on Friday?
It does, but she works at another town hall that also closes at noon, so she'll be able to come, so Patricia will adjust her hours, if necessary, in order to be here and um, get the benefit of that training.
Alright, and that just goes on for as long as we feel necessary?
The agreement says, um, through October, and it can have the option to end if necessary.
Okay, alright. So, um, yeah, so I'll make that motion then.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.